Okay, we'll call the meeting to order, seven oh five. We, Lori, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance? And John, would you offer your vocation for us tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in heaven, as we gather here this night as a planning commission, we ask that we may be guided by thy Spirit. We ask that we may be able to remember that we are representatives of this city of Woodland Hills and may be able to make decisions and make recommendations that will be good for our residents and those in the city. We ask that the Spirit might guide us in our thoughts and actions, citizen of Jesus Christ.
Amen. Amen. Thank you. I don't see anybody zoomed in. Or nobody's here for public comment, so we'll pass on that. Item number five, approval of the March twenty, twenty twenty-four Planning Commission meeting minutes. Larry gave me a couple, two corrections to make, and I think I made them. But I, I went back and tried to see what they were, and I some way lost his email where he sent me what the corrections were. And they were minor, they didn't change the meaning of anything. And so I sent him an email and said, can you send that to me again? What those corrections were, and he didn't do it and apologized later, so. Minutes are, I think they're good either way. And if Larry, if I can, they were, they were more, they weren't substantive changes. But I thought it sounded maybe better the way that he had sequestered just a couple of word changes there, so. And we take a motion on it, just indicate with corrections, and then I'll find out what those, what those were. The basic minutes I'd sent out to everybody shortly after the last meeting, so just reference it.
So I'll make a motion to approve the March twenty twenty-four minutes with corrections.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second to that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. In the absence of two commissioners, Simon, you're welcome to vote, so forth with us tonight.
Okay, I'll vote with you tonight.
Okay. Included in your packet there, there's a, a proposed ordinance called accessory apartments. We've dealt with ADUs in the past, accessory dwelling units, and they have to be all, the, the unit has to be part of the home, it can't be a detached unit. We've had two incidences where people have a detached garage where they have requested to make ADUs out of them, and we haven't been able to because it'd be contrary to our ordinances. And I didn't know that there was an accessory apartment ordinance. It's a state code that's available, we've never done it before. But it allows a detached unit then to become a separate living quarters. But it ties it into the main residence. So the, it talks about utilities have to come off the main residence, they can't have a separate utility. And.
So a separate utility would be like a furnace?
It's, no, it's own utility meter, it's own electrical meter, S E S D meter.
It can't have it.
It can't have it. And that's how it ties back into an apartment connected with the main structure. So as I talked to Ted further about this, and it, it's silent on this, but we decided with the sewer and the water, that they also had to come off of the main residential structure. So they weren't separate, they would be part of, they would tie into the main structure. If it was a sewer, then, then it would come off the main structure sewer, it wouldn't be another connection to the sewer line.
Through the home, or would it be able to tie into?
The same lateral.
The same lateral that comes into.
It could, yes, as long as it wasn't a tie-in to the main, main sewer.
Right. So they still need a manhole or anything?
Yes.
What about a septic tank?
That's a little different because those are kind of part of, they're, they're structured initially by, by how many bedrooms, how many bathrooms are in the home. And now it's being added to. If, if the county allows, says, well, you've got, you've got ample capacity in your existing septic, then we would require them to tie into their septic, their old septic for the home. If they didn't, we'd allow them to have their own septic system because there's no charge for that. So it's, it's kind of a unique thing to have, but that's, that's the way you would approach it. And I've talked to Ted about it, and he's comfortable with taking that approach too, with these apartments. We're talking about accessory apartments, Severn. So I took parts of the state code, and Leighton has accessory apartments, and one other city, drawn a blank on it.
I know Springville does, I just built some there.
Was it Springville? Okay, or maybe it was Mapleton?
My understanding, because I kind of follow this affordable housing stuff pretty closely, and I thought the state actually mandated that we allow it. I'm pretty sure this is.
This is something that is.
If, if someone came and asked, and we said no, they could technically sue the state.
I think you're right, and it, and that's another reason that I think it would be good for us to adopt it is it counts towards affordable housing, although I, I think they're calling it living housing now. They've got a different term to it. But it would, it would augment and add to the housing that we have in the city if somebody wants to do this. The requirements are pretty stringent, they have to have the same setbacks as the home does. So they're not going to be putting one of these on a tiny lot. Now maybe someone would put a tiny home, which would potentially qualify for this, but the setbacks and things are kind of the issue. That, and they have to have parking available, or also at least one parking place, they could have more if they wanted, but at least one.
At least one off-street?
Yes.
So it could be, what about an accessory garage? So like your garage in your back, would that count as a stall if they could pull into that garage or park in front of it?
If they, they can't take away from existing places. Now, if, if there's a requirement, and I think our requirement is a two-car garage. And so if, if an owner said, well, I just want a one-car garage, no, they can't do that. Because our standard requirement is two-car garage, so they'd have to build another garage. But what, what this would allow is if they've got a detached garage already, then it would allow them to, to put a, a living quarters above that if they wanted to do it. Or add on to that somewhere. Or in it, but again, they can't take away from parking that they've got. So if that's a third parking place, then they could use that garage parking for the apartment parking. As long as they've got two other parking places, which meets our code.
So what we're saying though is that the accessory building would not require a two-car garage. Only the primary residence requires a two-car garage.
Correct. Yeah, with this accessory building, now if somebody wanted to make it two cars, they can do that. But at least one additional parking place for the apartment. So that's, that's the essence of what we designed. Our comment here, now I haven't, my plan is next Tuesday is to talk to the council about it, just let them know that this is in the works, but we would have a public hearing next month to present this for any public comment, feedback that might exist out there. But my purpose in, in bringing it up tonight with us is to get your thoughts. I tried to get it to you at least a couple days early, give you a chance to look through it. If you had any questions or concerns, then we can talk about that tonight. If you don't, that's fine, we can still talk about it in our May meeting when we have the public hearing. If we get some public input, things that we want to further talk about with, with this ordinance.
So while you read through it when you sent it, and thank you for doing that. A couple notes, so this is showing the primary dwelling unit, the property must be owner-occupied. A lot of cities are saying one of them has to be. You, you can't rent them both out, but if you wanted to, you could live in the little one and rent the big house. And for some people, that might work, so I know Springville is written that way where you have to live in one of them. We don't care which one, but you've got to live on the premises. But if you want to downsize and move into the little one-bedroom and rent out the four-bedroom, go for it. But I think the idea is that the owner's there, it's not going to turn into this party and.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I'm, I think that's a good alternative to take that approach.
Something to think about there.
To change that around.
And then you mentioned setbacks, it sounds like, because for them, their setbacks, of course you can't have it in the front, it's got to be back. But it, it follows their accessory building setbacks, at least the side and, and rear setbacks, which out there is five feet. So we were able to go pretty close, you can tuck it in a little corner, certainly not in the front, but it still did. Even though it's a residence, it, it, it stayed in the accessory building setbacks, just as, as any other accessory building would. So something to just kick around, I'm not, I don't know if the state has a stance on that, but.
I, I'd have to look at that, I thought they did, that they said that it, that had to maintain the same, whatever the setbacks were for the district that it was in, it had to comply with those, but maybe.
And it's the setbacks of an accessory building?
No, the setbacks of the main structure, that's, that's what I remember from reading, it's been a couple of weeks now.
How do they do that if it's the main, how do they get the setback as the main structure?
If it, another's a small lot, probably would not accommodate this. But if they, if they've got an acre, and depending on, now if they've got a mega mansion on that acre, it, it may not work. But if it's, say, a regular home, then it can be, you know, the setbacks are less, it doesn't have to be the same as. So if you've got a fifty-foot front setback and, and a twenty-foot on the side, and they got plenty of room to put one of these on the side and still have twenty feet, then they could put it on the side. Or they may be pushed to the back, and if there's a twenty-foot setback on the back, they would still have to maintain that. Now if the main home is right up against that twenty-foot setback, then they couldn't do it. But if they've got room back there and still have the twenty-foot setback, then, then they could put it in the back. And I need to look at that, the state requirement, and see how that's addressed in there, because I.
I've got the site plan, I'm going to pull up my.
Okay.
One here.
Yeah, if you want it, yeah, please.
Yeah, because that, if we're, if it's already an accessory building, and it's, the accessory building setbacks.
It has to be built by code, so.
Right, but what if it is, maybe it's a, a big, a large garage, it's an accessory building, and it's, and we've looked at it as an accessory building setbacks. Is that, is that going to affect them putting an apartment in that?
It could, depending upon, that's something to, for us to consider, if we wanted to allow accessory building setback. And talk about that further, but that, five, five feet from the property line for a living structure, that, that might be a little.
So this is ten feet, I did ten feet, it was ten feet on that one.
What is the, how does the ordinance, the state code read?
And I don't, I would have to dig into the state, but I know that's.
This is what you did.
This is what we did in Springville.
Okay.
And they're, they're pretty tight, they, they're building officials, he knows everything about all kinds of stuff, so. I'm pretty sure they're pretty compliant. Anyway, I, I was thinking in my mind it was five feet, but we are ten feet on this one.
Okay, now their, their standard for, just for that particularly district you're building may have been ten feet.
It is, yeah, so the residence.
So they're, they're within the, the standard of the, of the home that would normally be built there.
Yeah, but the residence is ten feet from the one side, and then the ADU is ten feet from the other side. So it's, it's following the same setback as the home.
As a regular home.
But I, I think that the accessory buildings may also be at ten foot.
Okay. But I, I can look that up and see what, what the state code is on it, if it says that it has to be the same setback as a residence, or not. And then we can further discuss that if we wanted to.
Really, I mean, this one was a twenty by twenty, it's just a little one, and you don't need a lot of space to put that in, so.
Yeah.
So you can, so I've been involved with some people that have built those containers in tiny homes. And they'll, they crane them over a house, and they set them in a backyard. They're not even on footings, other than some pilings, they, well, they do like a spot footing on the corners in a few spots because they pretty much self-level, or they, or those are level, and then they just set them on and weld them down to it. And then they hook their sewers and stuff up to them, and they have like a crawl space.
Okay.
Kind of how it works. Is that?
Is that code compliant for a primary structure?
I don't know, that's what I wondered, if that's something that, because the ones that I was involved in were in Texas. And so it may not be the same here as it is there, obviously, but.
Yeah, they built that, that apartment building downtown Salt Lake out of those.
Yeah, they did.
They just needed a structural engineer.
Well, in Springville, that restaurant's made out of.
That's right, they have that restaurant.
Yes.
So those are both, one's commercial, which is a different.
You say a higher standard.
Yeah, but then the, the one in Salt Lake, it's residential, obviously, it's an apartment building.
And it'd be interesting to see the footing, I mean, they obviously have to be below frost and things like that, just to keep it from being earth.
Yeah.
It'd be interesting to see how they require that.
See what the code requires for something like that. Yeah.
And then my only other note was the, the additional water share.
And what fees are they going to require, because if you build it, if you.
What, what I put in here was they would, the owner would need to provide half. Point four-five acre-feet of water, not the full ninety, because there's no outside watering, because they're, it's the same lot. So, and that will be an issue, and I, I open to your thoughts on it, whether, I mean, they will definitely be using more water. So I didn't, I didn't, I felt to require half of what's required for a home would, would work.
So what do you do in the case of an add-on, I mean, if someone is going to add another little living room and a bedroom to a house? It's really a similar load, you know, really, as far as water, it's, you know, it's really a bedroom and a bathroom.
Now, we've, we've decided with an ADU, there is no additional water share that is required if someone wants to put a basement apartment in or something like that for an ADU. So this potentially could be almost same as an ADU. There's more people coming into that lot to use water, but cities decided not to acquire additional water for an ADU, so.
So in the winter, when people aren't watering outside, the average Woodland Hills house uses one to two thousand gallons per person. And, which, which is nothing.
Per month?
Per month, one to two thousand gallons per person. And if we had a little apartment, it really wouldn't add that much more water. But I'm thinking, well, what if they had several apartments, and do we have a limit on that? I mean, as long as it fits.
Just be one, one per lot.
Do we have that, you can only put one?
One bathroom, one.
There's no restriction on, they could build two bedrooms, two bathrooms if they wanted to, but there's only one, one apartment unit.
Because the outdoor watering is what skyrockets, indoor watering is not a lot at all.
Okay, good to know.
No, I think, I think some of our rationale for the point nine oh for a house is that we're assuming that the house is full of people. And so with the ADU downstairs, I mean, it's not going to be really any more people than the original house was. And so that's why we didn't add any acre-feet if you have an ADU in the existing structure. In this case, we've got another structure. And so I, I think the point four-five is, is not a bad compromise. You know, though we ought to require a little bit more at least.
Yeah.
Can they buy half-acre feet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So you, usually you're going to have, I probably most often, two people in that accessory apartment, whether it's a young couple, or their children moved back, married couple and are, are living there. Likely not to have a lot of children. And could even be maybe one person, but we're. The last review that we did on a yearly basis, we were pretty close to that point nine acre-feet throughout the year with summer watering and, and that sort of thing, so.
So just to maybe give a little bit of a context or a backdrop, when we're doing new communities, often they'll require for a whole lot between a quarter and a third. These are smaller, of course, like between a six and a quarter, and these are some big lots up here, but it seems like a little bit much to me, because I can do a whole lot with a whole house with a quarter to a third, and it depends on what the, what they've decided. But, you know, if you just add this little building, the yard didn't get any bigger, and I would think you could almost do like a tenth.
It's true, you're getting less landscaping at that point.
Yeah, you're less landscaping, it probably is going to use less water than the grass would have said in there. It's just my opinion, but.
We were, we used to take, we used to do four, point four-five acre-feet for a home, and we, we reached a point where we exceeded that.
Well, you've got, there are big lots here, you know, so I'm talking about smaller lots, you know, so I'm just looking at this in a smaller, at a smaller scale, of course. So I, I agree, you're, you're about where you need to be there, but I'm just thinking to add this little home, it might be a little bit much. Especially water's getting so expensive and scarce.
Yeah, it is.
I don't know, I, I can see the reasoning be to adding a requirement for more water shares, but I feel like the more land is used up in the house, the less water the lot overall will use.
Well, that's another good point, yeah, it wouldn't be as much to water outside with the accessory apartment on it. So we can, you know, we, we can go either way on it, and then the council will be the ones who are making the final decision.
If the city is consistently using more water than we have water shares for it, the city gets criticized?
Not yet, we're pretty much, we're right, even with what, with what we've got. Now our capa, our well capacity, there's still more in our well capacity. But the shares, we're using most of the, the water that we are allocated to use throughout the city.
And we have a lot of vacant lots still.
We do.
So as those get landscaped, then they'll use more.
Then we'll be using more water, yeah. And I think we're a ways from that yet still. Okay, thanks, Simon, any, any other thoughts, comments from? From, and again, we can, we, in, in May, we'll have a public hearing on it, and we, we'll see what, if we get any impact, im, input from the public and have some further discussions, so it's not going to end tonight.
I'm glad you're bringing this up, or this is kind of a light, because there's, I think, a lot of cities are, there's a lot of pressure on housing.
There is.
And, you know, I think that, I, I see in St. George, in a lot of areas, that, that they're doing exactly that, they're putting a tiny home, they're moving into the casita, and, and renting out their big portion.
Is that right?
Yeah, it's happening all the time.
Oh, interesting.
Because they can get more rent out of the big house, and they need the space.
And there's just two of them now, kind of, in that kind of a setting.
A lot of those homes already have that situation, you could see this being kind of a good thing for a lot of people.
Yeah, that, when I just showed the site plan of, it's a single gentleman who bought it, and he lives in the casita, he's the house owner. He's not home a whole lot, and so he's all, he's like this.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I have, I have one concern, as I was reading through this. We've got accessory apartment cannot be used for short-term rental, less than thirty days. As I remember, the state passed an ordinance that said that the cities could not restrict what are basically B and Bs, BR and Bs, short-term rentals. And we're out of compliance with that right now, because the way our ordinances read, you can't have short-term rentals in Woodland Hills.
And we made an effort to do away with that, and Councilman Malkovich put a hold on it because she wanted to check and see what some other cities were doing. But we were going to do away with that.
It's in the, it's in the state.
We discussed that, I remember.
Yeah, and. Yeah, and, um, so, and it, they tie it back into advertising, that, well, and I don't, maybe there was a legal reason for doing this, but cities could not, not allow somebody to advertise on Airbnb for short-term rental, and that's where most of it occurs, is to get that advertisement out there. So that was, that was the part of the ordinance that we were going to do away with. But, so, again, I need to look at the state, there may have been a, an allowance here. In fact, our ordinance says ninety days, that's what our ordinance says, that, that's what we consider as a short-term rental. So, and that, again, we were gonna do away with that, until I got kind of put on hold. But I need to look back at the state to see if there's any, how the state addresses that, if they do. But it's a good point, if they, if they don't address it, then that's a, a, another option that the city has, is to allow short-term rentals. And there's a whole process, not only with accessory apartments, but short-term rentals, that, um, an owner has to comply with. The city can tax the, like a hotel, that, these rentals. And a person has to get it licensed, and so the city's aware of them, they have to pay the state so much sales tax, depending upon the frequency of, of the rental and whatnot, so there's some other areas here that, uh, I'm not sure if I addressed those in here or not, I, I meant to indicate that those kinds of compliances need to be met with, whatever is in the state.
Provo allows it. Because for my son's fortieth birthday, his wife rented the downstairs in a house in Provo, and so the whole family was there, all the grandparents and everybody, and they had access to the pool and everything else. So, I mean, that's one place that we can probably look and see how Provo is addressing it.
Okay.
I know that when I was having discussions with my children about what was going to happen to my house when Doris and I passed away, and they said, well, what is turning into a BR and B? I said, no, you can't do that, it's prohibited in Woodland Hills. Well, then the state passed the law, and so I haven't told them that.
Well, I got, I, uh, with the other thing that we're looking at doing, I contacted Mapleton, because I heard that they were in the midst of trying to decide what, what, where to go and everything. And I called the planning commission, a person over there in the planning commission, and she said, there was such a hailstorm that was brought up by that, that Mapleton just decided to let it go, and, and to allow it, not, not try to stop it or put other, uh, criteria in there that would make it difficult to rent, they just did away with their, with their short-term rental restrictions over there, so.
Well, and if they charge sales tax, it could be beneficial, really.
Yeah, no, could.
Yeah, if you could start taxing like a hotel, I don't see how that's gonna hurt the city.
Yeah.
And some people might find it, like, for, I'm not gonna deal with all that, I'm not gonna do it anymore, you know, you gotta keep your license up every year, and file your taxes, and they're like, ah, forget it.
Yeah. And then there's the thing where the city happy to monitor it. Hey, you owe us some money.
Yeah, that's true.
Just give it to the treasurer.
I'll send it, Bill.
Yeah, if you don't pay up, we're gonna shut your water off. Okay, good comments, I'll follow up with those, some of those issues and concerns, and, um, discuss it further, so, good, thank you for that. Um, the other ordinance was as a fall, is a follow-up discussion of what we had last time on these small portable accessory buildings under one hundred square feet. So this, that's what I drafted, that was sent to, to each of you, to see if you're, you're comfortable with that, making those, making that change, and, and adjustment to, uh, smaller accessory buildings. I've talked to a number of people, and their comment is, it's about time, you know, for, for these to not have as much, uh, regulation with the small, under hundred square feet accessory buildings, so.
With it, I'm wondering if it would be possible in our existing ordinance, where it talks about accessory buildings and, and their placement, if it, we just put in that, small portable accessory buildings under one hundred square feet may be placed against the house or near it.
You mean without a, submitting a site plan, kind of thing?
Well, it, the other one says that they can't be within twenty feet of the home.
Twenty feet.
And if we just adjust that part, if they're under one hundred square feet, they may be closer than twenty feet to the home.
Now, this says they're exempt from setbacks.
Yeah.
Do you think we, we need to say more than that? And can be placed against a home?
Yeah, ju, just in the original, and if we put small portable accessory buildings under one hundred square feet, may be placed near, but they still have to meet all of the other requirements, but.
I think it, we're requesting a site plan still, just so that things don't get out of hand.
Mm-hmm.
Know where they're gonna be placed, and, uh, and the size of them, so.
Obviously, some will probably just buy a top shed at Lowe's and put it up without thinking about, talking to us, but at least it gives us, there's a ba, a bad situation, we can at least go out and be like, hey, we didn't approve this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we have that now. They're more than a hundred feet, a hundred square feet, yeah, I didn't know I needed to do that.
Really?
Uh, so, good, we can certainly add, add that in there to, to help make a point, too. Is there anything else that you see there that causes heartburn, or that we should address and we haven't, or I haven't? Again, this will go, this would go to the public hearing, part of the public hearing as well, so we'll be able to have further discussion of it in, in May. Okay.
I think it looks fine.
All right, good.
I, I do think that I had maybe to say something here, because that's what brought it up the first time.
Well, I think that's the only thing that we're really concerned about, changing, isn't it? Just that they may be near the home.
Pretty much.
That's why I thought if we just put in the original, what do you call it, this little section of code, just add there.
That ten eleven two is right at the front of the ordinance.
Okay, say, if they're, you know, the little ones can be closer to the house, and then we don't need to address any of the other changes, because everything would still be as is, except if they were small, they could be placed.
Yeah. Okay. Um, I want to talk a little bit about, um, the general plan, and where we're at with that. Lori is part of the, um, Community Development Committee that is taking on the exercise of, um, putting together recommendations to us for the general plan, as well as the community visioning that's going to be done as part of that. I've talked to Severin about being involved on the, the, the general plan part of the work of that. And he's agreed to do that, and kinda be generally the liaison between the planning commission and that group. There's, I guess, and I don't know why, there's a little bit of hesitancy in, um, fear, I think, and fear's not the right word, but I guess concern would be a better word, of having two planning commissioners being, serving on that group. I don't see that as an issue, we're going, there is a chair of that, her name is Kirsten Thomas, I don't know if any of you know her. She's the chair of that Community Development Committee. Carrie is a liaison with the council to that committee. And, um, I'm not clear of, of her complete function. An RFP, Request for Proposal, has gone out, it went out a couple of weeks ago, soliciting a company to help put together this general plan and strategic plan. They, and, and that, Lori is part of that group, there's five of them that were originally selected. One of them resigned, he's going into a doctor program and didn't feel that he had time to do it. And Lori has taken his place then, on that committee, with the blessing of the committee chair. The city's trying to be, wants to be sensitive to the workings of that committee, and doesn't, and I understand, and doesn't want to overstep its bounds by forcing people on a committee that there may be concerns about with the, the number of people and the role that they will play. Myself and Ted Mickelson, Ted's the one who wrote the RFP, he's written, in his words, hundreds of them with Jones and DeMille, for one thing or another. And he and I, as well as the mayor, have a meeting with Kirsten Thomas on Monday to talk to her, and help, her to help her understand a little bit more of the role of the, the planning commission, and particularly of Severin in that, uh, in that process. I think she's new to this whole thing, Severin is, it would be, the only one who's ever been through a general plan of that group of people. Lori got here after we did the last general plan, so she hasn't been through it. So I think Severin can bring a lot of knowledge and understanding, and ideas and thoughts, uh, to this group as they, um, are kind of organizing this, how we're going to go forward with it. Now, this company, whichever company it is, they've got another couple of weeks, we met with, with five different companies, uh, a week ago to answer any questions that they might have about the, uh, proposal, and Lori was with us then, too, to help them better understand a little bit what we were looking for. And so Ted has devised a scoring process, and giving certain weights to certain elements of this, the requirements of the request for a proposal. So Lori's gonna be on that selection process, and my, I would ask Severin to be part of that as well. We're, we're just receiving a little bit of hesitancy on, on our, on the planning commission's involvement with that. So that's why we're gonna sit down with Kirsten on Monday and help her, better explain to her, which we probably haven't done as good a job as we could have, a little bit more of how two people being assigned to that process will benefit the overall, what they're going to be doing. So, um, they will, that group, that, that committee, together with the company, will be making a, their proposal to the planning commission, uh, as to the things to be included in the general plan. It's still a little bit up in the air about the strategic plan part of that. I, I can see a need to bring some of that into the general plan, but maybe not all of it. But we'll see how it goes, and I, I don't have any preconceived ideas about it, we'll just see how it starts all to fit together, and, and, um, as Ted explained it, said the strategic plan is where we want to go, the general plan is how we get there. That's the way Ted's kind of looked at it, and, and it's kind of structured that way, this, this grant, that we have, by the way, to hire this outside firm, is a state grant, and, uh, there's around a little over a hundred thousand dollars left in that. We anticipate this whole process taking upwards of a year to do, with the visioning groups, and trying to reach out to residents here, and them being part of, of these visioning groups, and getting thoughts and ideas from them, as well as possibly some surveys that might be done, uh, within the city. So, it's not a rush rush job, but, uh, we want it to be well, well thought out, and, and we've got, I think, quite a good group of people to help with, with the process. And each of those that were here, I, I personally would really feel comfortable with any one of them getting, getting the, uh, getting the award. Uh, I've had a little bit of dealings with a guy named Mike Hansen, who, um, he's, he's kind of a break-off company from Jones and DeMille, but he's worked with them a lot in this arena, and, um, probably, maybe he's a little more familiar with, with the whole process than others might be. We had another fellow from Sunrise Engineering, who, they have a component to help cities with their general plans. And then they had two ladies, each from different companies, but they're coming together with, with each of the, the strengths of each of these two companies, and making a joint proposal to us. And judging from the questions asked and things like that, I, they were good questions, and, uh, insightful, and so they, they seemed to, to fit right in. Do you have any other thoughts, Lori, on that meeting?
Jeremy Searle, he was there, wasn't he? Jeremy Searle?
Oh, yeah, Jeremy Searle, I forgot about Jeremy. He's in our, you don't know him probably, but he's in our city here, he's a civil engineer, and, uh, he's been through one of some of our general plans in the past, he served on the planning commission.
Part of the planning commission.
Right.
When we did the last one.
Yeah, was he in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I remember when we had the, the open house to talk about the general plan,
Uh-huh.
he got cornered by that lady that was so upset about showing the trail behind her property.
Yeah, that's right.
So.
That's right. So, anyway, he's, he was here as well, so, anyway, that, I, I felt good about the group, and there may be more, those are just, that was just a meeting that the city had, for those who are interested in coming and finding out a little bit more of what we're trying to do. There may be others that weren't there who will submit a proposal, I don't know, but, um.
When do those proposals come in?
Uh, I think the first part of May is their deadline, first week of May, something like that, I think it was the third or fourth of April that Ted got that out there, so they have thirty days to put their proposal together, so.
And this is what happened last time, is you had an RFP in different.
We didn't.
Oh, no.
No, there was a guy from MAG who helped us, and that's part of our dues that the city pays to that organization, and so he willingly came and helped us do it, so. We didn't have a, a grant, or we're paying anybody out, and it was, it was, he was good, he was insightful, and, but he was very helpful to us, and did, did a lot of the work that, uh, we otherwise have, would have been doing, so. Anyway, I just wanted to share that with everybody, and bring you up to date with it, and we'll keep, I'll keep you in touch, Severin, of work, for that.
And then, I don't have any problem at all with Lori doing calls.
Well, we'll see, I think, uh, I'm, I'm optimistic, um, with, with, with that committee, and the more I get familiar with Kirsten, I didn't know her at all, but I've been in a couple of settings with her, and the more, the more comfortable I'm feeling with her, and, and things, and, so, anyway.
Is the committee just made up of general public members? Is the committee just made up of general public members then?
It is. Yeah, there's, there's Kirsten and Lori and there's Chloe, what's Chloe's last name?
Cleveland.
Cleveland and there's a guy on it.
Oh, Nate Myers.
Nate Myers.
And then someone from Kason and someone from Spanish Fork?
But they won't be on the committee.
Oh, they won't?
They'll be on the selection, on the, we're calling that a panel.
Okay, okay.
We brought two ladies who have been involved in their own city to be part of the evaluation and selection process for who gets the award. They've been through this before, so, and they'll just be part, that's, that's the only part they'll play. They won't be on the committee or be involved with it in the aftermath, just on evaluating those vendors who have made a, who, who are looking for the, for the work. So, there's one more guy on, I can't think of his name on your committee, Lori, but I can't, can't think of him. Chamberlain, is it not, is it not Cody Chamberlain?
I can't remember.
Anyway. Any questions on that?
Do they have another meeting in person before they give a proposal?
They don't. That was the only one.
I only ask, I, I don't know if they've been involved. How do, how do people hear about the RFP then once?
They're posted on the state website. Then we put it on our city website also.
Oh, that's Larry, isn't it?
Huh?
That's Larry. Isn't that the same name with his son?
Oh, maybe. Is that you, Larry? You're muted. Oh, there you are. Okay, howdy. How's Montana? Are you freezing yet up there? I don't know. It doesn't look like you're muted, but can you hear us?
Yes.
Oh, there you go, okay. Now we hear you. Very good. Well, welcome.
I thought I'd join before you close.
Okay. They say better late than never.
Better never late.
Very good. Just a little update too, for whatever it's worth, on the Fugue case.
Do I need to stop the recording or?
No, we're, we're good. They've appealed. The, the judge ruled against them in each of the issues raised with the Corbett litigation. Now, there were five different points. And what the motions dealt with was whether or not the Fuges had a, whether Corbett was subject to being sued. They did not get into the detail of allegations that they've made against Corbett. That wasn't, that wasn't discussed, there wasn't a trial. The judge just ruled based upon the motions that Corbett was immune from being sued. So that's what they've appealed to the appellate court. And I think the appellate court has two or three months to look at that and decide what, if they accept that or if they come back to them with more questions or the appellate court may go back to the district court to get clarification on things. So it continues to move forward, albeit at a little slower pace, but that's, that's where that's at. So city's still involved in, in paying for Corbett's defense, part of the trust insurance that we have. So you, you're, you're getting in on the tail, the tail end of.
Well, it's been blowing in the wind for a while, so I've heard a little bit.
Okay, yeah. Well, we were in hopes that it would, we were holding our breath and hopes that it would end with, with the Fort District Court, but it, it hasn't. And that's Fuge's options to, to appeal it if they chose to do so, which they have. So we're, that's going forward with that. Anything else that any of you have under miscellaneous that want to review or talk about?
I moved them when you adjourned.
Very well, Larry, did you have anything to contribute?
Oh, I just, did we pass those new ordinances then or approve them?
No, we're going to have a public hearing on these two in May. And so we, we have to have a public hearing, so we'll get input from that, have them further discussed then at our May meeting and then we'll go from there. Will you be back from Montana in the third Wednesday of May?
Yes, I will, but we're also heading to San Antonio sometime in May, but I think we'll be home by then.
Okay. Well, Simon's willing to sit in for you if you can make it.
Oh, he's a good man. One, one of my teachers who had been teaching for fifty years said you could say anything you wanted about anybody if when you were done, you could say, well, bless their heart.
That's right. I heard that the other day. Okay, we've got a motion for Severin to adjourn, any second?
All second.
Okay, John second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good, we're adjourned. Thank you all. You, you have a safe trip home, Larry.
Yep, planning on coming home Friday or Saturday.
Okay.
We had four inches of snow up here this morning.
Oh, really?
It's all melted now, it just freak storm.
Hey, if you get here Friday, you'll be here in time for the Big Tooth Maple Syrup Festival on Saturday.
Ooh, sounds sweet.
So, yeah.
Yep, get there earlier, it'll sell out.
That's true. I think they've rationed it, they're going to do two releases or three releases instead of all at once this time.
Oh, is that right?
Sold out so fast.
Spread it out a little bit.
Bringing it in waves, sort of, because it disappeared instantly.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
How much are the bottles? They're a lot too, I think.
Yeah.
They've been boiling syrup for a long time.
They're like eleven gallons to one, I think, or quart or something.
It's, it's, yeah, it's a big, big number for what you get.
Fifty to one.
Yeah, that's true.
What's that, Larry?
I think it's fifty to one.
Fifty?
Fifty to one.
Fifty to one.
Wow.
Get one gallon, you have to process fifty.
Wow. No wonder it's so expensive.
That's, that's, you know, that's why they probably said eleven gallons to the quart. Hold up that by four, so forty-four gallons to the quart.
Yeah.
Crazy.
Well, they're supposed to have a lot more things this year than they did last year too. They've had more advertising and doing a lot of things over there, so. Very good. Thank you all.